Thank you very much. Members of council moving on to item three, we have the approval of the agenda. Review the agenda as of Thursday evening and I'll turn the floor over to take action on item three.
I move to approve the agenda.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Manica for the approval of the agenda seconded by Councilwoman Martin. See no hands for discussion. Madam clerk, would you please call it a roll on approval of the agenda?
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is item four, approval of the proposed minutes. Councilor see their packets on Thursday. Members have had an opportunity to reference this material. At this point, we'll turn the floor over to members of council to do as they please on item four, the approval of the proposed minutes. Again, the item on the floor is the approval of the proposed minutes for the in-person and virtual regular meeting that was held on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Forgive me for not finishing them. City council, what is your pleasure on item four?
I move to approve the proposed minutes in person and virtual regular meeting December eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
We have a motion on the floor of Councilwoman Manica for the approval of the minutes. Do we have second? Second from Councilwoman Martin. I see no hands for discussion. Madam clerk, would you please call it a roll?
Councilwoman Shafi?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. This is the section of our weekly meeting every week where we turn the flow over to Mayor McDonald so that she may have an opportunity to address council directly as well as citizens who are present. Mayor McDonald, the floor is yours.
But I'm wishing everyone here a happy new year, a successful new year, and I'm wishing the city a successful today, I had the job of presenting a award to someone who, I guess, God didn't want him mistaken that long. On the sixteenth, I was wanting to present an award to Mr. Washington Hayes, but it didn't, it didn't come on time. And so it did come, but it came a day late and Mr. Hayes passed away. He worked for the city for forty-five years. He's eighty-five, he was eighty-five years old. He called him Wash, his name is Washington Hayes. And so I want to take a moment of silence just for Mr. Hayes, who served the city until he couldn't serve anymore. Let me take a moment of silence, please. So they will be at that, and I'm asking the city council if possible, because the mayor doesn't do resolutions. The mayor does proclamations, and if the city council would draw a resolution for him. So I'm hoping that happens and that you all presented at the funeral if anyone comes or make sure the family. I have to pay homage to my sorority. Congratulations to the Lady Five Ladies Sorority Incorporated on one hundred and four years of scholarship service, sisterhood, and final honor. Today is our founder's day, and as you can see, Miss Manica, I hope members of the greatest sorority in this country. Coffee and conversations will resume next month on the Saturday of Wednesday. I am looking for a bigger venue because we kind of ran out of space and people was having to stand up. But as you know, the city council meetings are the city councils and the mayor, and I'm having my meetings in the area so that everybody can come out and get your questions answered and talk to me about what feels right. Talk to me about what you feel. That day could be a lot of questions. Rep who's on the energy committee in Land and Land. Working with me as well as our commissioner and homeland security, which we have brought in, and Stephanie Chang, and so we're going to continue to try to work together to solve this issue with D two E and see if we can get something going where they can continue to upgrade. And we won't have as many outages as we are having. The southeast area of Highland Park's outages are poor. They just, it's unacceptable, and we have to do something about it. So we will, we have a community meeting on that. Talking to them about what is their plan and how, how long will it take to get there. He Springs Church has opened its doors this week for the only center. So if you know of anyone and somebody's out in the cold or whatever, you can direct it to He Springs between the hours, I think it is ten and four thirty. And with that being said, it is extremely cold, a bit extremely cold tonight. Probably go, not even go back twenty this week. So please dress warm, please be careful. And if you don't have to be outside, go outside. Oh, no, it's not overnight. So it's ten A M. Did I say ten A M? I said ten A M and four thirty. I was like, did I say P M? Uh-uh, it's ten A M to four thirty. That's the end of the day. Okay, so just make sure that if you know anybody who's that's it for me, Council President. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is the first section of our meeting that allows citizens' participation. We have a very light agenda. We only have three items, one from the clerk, one from the finance department, and one from the engineering department. If there are citizens who had comments that they wanted to make on the resolution to approve and establish polling places and rates of pay for elected chairpersons and inspectors or from finances submission of the monthly financial statement for December or the engineering department, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of the N dot agreement twenty-three fifty-five oh two. You will make your way to the podium, and if we don't have any questions, we will move directly into our agendas.
About the financial statement, I remember one of the councilperson asking for it to be itemized. Would that statement be itemized?
Yes.
Okay, will it be in a chart?
Okay, true. Ladies and gentlemen, during the citizens' participation, this is where citizens to comment, and what we're doing is we are going back to the footage to write down the citizens' questions, but also asking people to reach out to the department that they need to speak to. Counsel, we can listen, but we're not, we're not supposed to try and answer those questions for you.
Well, they, I found like they were just because I did hear itemized. I was at that meeting at that time, and she asked for it to be itemized, and I'm asking, will it be itemized?
Okay, thank you so much. Seeing no, we will move right into item five of the city part. This is the resolution to approve rate of pay for elected chairpersons and inspectors for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four presidential primary election. Members of council have had an opportunity to review our packet. It's up to your pleasure how we proceed on item number five.
I move to approve the resolution establishing polling places and rate of pay for election chairperson and inspector for the February twenty-second
I got some questions.
A councilman from District Three has questions.
Chairperson.
Chairpersons are appointed by the election commission.
Okay, do we have an election commission?
Per charter, yes, we do.
Okay, who's on that commission?
Supervising director, Department of Public Works, city attorney, and the chief of police per charter.
Okay, okay. I know who the chief is, but we have, we have, we have is it John Clark? Is it Miss Delphina Burton? Is Anthony Chubbs? I mean, it's
has been sending a representative, Chris Messing. Attorney Chris Messing.
Okay, so Mr. Chubbs can't be here in person. Got it. So he sends a representative. Who's the inspector?
They are appointed by the election commission.
Okay, okay, because last election, Tony was our inspector, so I would assume that he would be the same again.
Tony who?
In the, in the Treasury's department downstairs.
That's not true. Tony has never been an inspector for the election.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We've heard from the third district. The second district and first district, you two have an opportunity to address this issue. Do you have questions for us on this, on this matter, or can we call it a roll? Ms. Martin? Thank you very much. On item five, the resolution to approve establishing the polling places and rate of pay for elected chairpersons and inspectors for the February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four presidential primary election, I have a motion on the floor of Councilwoman Manica, seconded by the chair. Madam clerk, would you please call it a roll?
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on to item six, under finances, the submission of the monthly financial statement for December twenty twenty-three. The action on this is receive and file only. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I move to receive and file the financial statement for December two thousand and twenty-three.
Chair seconds. We have questions. Madam clerk, would you please call it a roll for items six under finance?
Councilwoman Shafi?
No.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Council President Thomas?
Yes. Tell me. Moving on to item seven of the engineering department, resolution authorizing the acceptance of N dot, M dot agreement twenty-three fifty-five oh two transportation economic development, T E D dash F category A for the repair of North Davidson Service Drive, Oakland Avenue, and South Davidson Service Drive, Oakland Avenue to the city of Highland Park's limits at Detroit, further known as resolution authorizing the acceptance of the M dot agreement, ladies and gentlemen. I don't want you to have to read that whole thing out. You've had an opportunity to review this, counsel. What's your pleasure?
I want to make a motion, resolution authorization, the acceptance of M dot agreement twenty-three dash five five oh two transportation economic development by T E F category for repair of North Davidson Service Drive, Oakland Avenue, and South Davidson Service Drive slash Oakland Avenue to the city of Highland Park.
Second, I have a second by Councilwoman Manica. We have questions on this one. Questions, Madam clerk, would you please call it a roll?
Councilwoman Shafi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Manica?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin?
Yes.
Council President Thomas?
Yes, motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we've completed our agenda for today. At this point, we'll turn it over to general citizens' participation. I'll get my timer out and set it for two Highland Park minutes, just three minutes. There are members of the audience who have items that they would like to address related to any topic that they would like to share with city council. And let me make this a statement. This is for citizens to comment. We're not, we don't always have the capacity to answer your question at the time, so it's unfair that we answer some people's questions and not everyone's questions. This is an opportunity for you to share the information for us to collect and give back to you. I am assuming you have everyone's contact information sitting on this day as via the website. We all have emails and phone numbers, so you should be able to contact all of us directly. And I have heard from citizens before contacting me directly, so I know it's possible. So during citizens' comments, we will take your comments in, but since we can't guarantee to answer everyone's comments, it will be unfair to answer any of those in an open forum like this. So you can please follow up with us after this. I'm sorry.
Happy New Year, everybody. I'm Leslie Robinson. I'm a resident of Highland Park, and I wanted to make a comment, since it can't be a question, as to the repairs on Oakland Avenue. You've probably noted, but I just want to make sure that I state that I believe that the repair that's been done to the pavement there is not adequate at this time. I do hope they will be continuing to fix that at each of the residential streets where that pavement is supposed to meet with the pavement on the streets. There is quite a bit of a grade difference there, so it's lumpy and bumpy. Also, where the manhole covers or the sewer drains are along the medians in Oakland, water is accumulating at various levels, so they haven't been graded properly, so there seems to be always standing water. And I just hope, as well as the manhole covers that are in the street, they're pretty high, they're much higher than the rest of the street, and I hope that you're going to have the paving company address that, because I don't think that's the type of work that Highland Park paid for. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have another citizen I'd like to be heard.
Good evening. My name is Carlos Top here on behalf of the N double A C P Highland Park chapter. The N double A C P Michigan State Conference has launched efforts to reactivate the Highland Park N double A C P branch. The reactivation organize, organizing committee kicked off a membership drive on Sunday, January the fourteenth. Thank you for your time, Highland Park. I look forward for residents and others to join the N double A C P Highland Park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Gregoire Eugene Lewis. I'm also the typical president of the city of Highland Park, but today I plead for you to, hopefully you can do a resolution for Mr. Wash. He was a stakeholder of this community. He's, he gave day, night, midnight, afternoons. He retired, came back for the city of Highland Park. He's always been a help, even when he didn't have to. So I hope, I know a lot of you may not have had a relationship with him, but I did, and he was an amazing man. He worked hard for this city.
Thank you.
Again, Miss Frye, I was wondering, like, how did you choose a chairperson for the election commission, and how much do they get paid, Miss Klein?
Experience two seventy-five for the chairperson appointed by the election commission. You fill out an application, and as you work with experience, you're trained to be a chairperson.
Your experience working with the election?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and when you talk about the Davidson Service Drive, you're talking about where the real, real bumpy part is that's been there for years? Is that the part we're talking about?
I hope so.
Me too. I hope so, but I'm just, I was trying to figure it out. Is it that real raggy part, like, they should have fixed along with the smooth part? Is it that part? Yeah, is it that part they're talking about? I'm just, I'm just trying to figure it out. Can someone answer? The Service Drive there, because, you know, I'm not no, you know, engineer, so.
It's from the city limits of Detroit side, far west, going up to Oakland.
Is it that raggy part? That's, okay, now I understand. Thank you for fixing it, because it seems like it should have been fixed for years, and y'all have a good day. Oh, one more question. Now, when you turn right there at Manchester in Woodward, there's some blinding lights, and so I drove there during the day, and it says cannabis. Is that person selling marijuana there in that space? The old Victory Bakery.
You have to check with the police department on that.
Okay, but the sign is up and the lights are up and it's bright. They didn't, they didn't inform the city council because I thought there was something going on with two years, something, something. So I'm just wondering.
Okay, Miss Friday, Highland Appliance sign still up too?
I ain't talking about that, Jamal. I don't need, I don't even need all that. I don't even need all that. I'm not even talking about that. I'm talking, I want to stay right where I'm talking about.
I know you're talking about
Okay, then, that's why I want to stay here. So I'm just saying, is it okay to say the marijuana? You can put your cannabis sign up and sell.
We don't, we don't.
I'm just asking a question. Is it, can we sell now in the city of Highland Park?
This is just citizens' comments, not citizens' questions, ma'am. I'm just, that's what it says.
Okay, well, you say you'll get back with an answer.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you so much.
That's the same comments.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Lemire?
That's a tough act to follow. Since it's citizens' comment. Oh, participation.
Okay.
Oh, I can't, I can't read. Kershid, good to see you, my man. Good to see everybody. If Highland Park Appliance, if somebody knows how I can get the Uptown Radio sign before they throw it in the garbage, I'd love to have that.
Okay, seeing no more citizens come to the podium, we will move into council affairs, starting with the councilman from District Three. The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, everybody. First, I would like to say that Council Pro Tem is not here today, as you can see. Her granddaughter has kind of taken a turn for possibly the worst, and she's on her way back to Cincinnati. She left just a couple hours ago, and I ask you to keep her and her grandchild in your prayers that she moves through, okay? So, you know, otherwise Council Pro Tem would have been here. You know what I'm saying? So having, having said that, I want to quickly comment on the Victory Bakery performance as far just to give a quick answer, because we are currently in legal litigation. There is no ordinance, no authority, no right whatsoever for anybody to sell cannabis in this city. Okay, now you know that there are a lot of questions about that place. I have addressed those questions in private, you know, I'd say, and I did address those questions as well in a newspaper article, okay? But as it stands right now, we are in legal litigation with them. But there is no one that is authorized in this city to sell cannabis, be it recreational or medical. We opted out. You all here, when we opted out, there is no ordinance for it. The state has been notified that we opted out. That's the end of that argument. Okay, all right. It's a new year, H P. So I'm gonna do my best to try to be a little bit more flexible. But I encourage everybody to recognize that while I'm sitting here trying to be flexible, don't abuse my kindness. Because underneath me trying to be the flexible individual in which I am still lies the douchebag that you all know. So don't, so please don't test me. Let's follow the rules. Let's run everything according to the way it's supposed to be ran. You will get no problems out of me. You will get no headache out of me. You will get no pushback from me. But the moment you deviate off the path of following things the way they're supposed to be followed, trying to circumvent this council and its authority, and trying to do things that are not according to the rules and the laws of the city, you're going to have a problem out of me, and I will continue to be that problem. So it's a new year. I'm gonna try to be a little bit more flexible, and you guys can help me by reminding me to be a little bit more flexible, Miss Frye. Please, you know what I'm saying? It's a new year. Let's hope that we can push this city forward a lot more than we did last year. Okay, we made some great strides last year, ladies and gentlemen, last year. This time, we were on the verge of bankruptcy and being taken over. But, but due to smart moves by this council, by Mrs. Square, by our, by our number one governor, Governor Gretchen Whitmer, by, by Stephanie Chang, by, by Mike McFaul, for all the people who fought for this city, we came out on top despite the odds. But it took sound decision-making. It took us paying attention to what was going on and not being scared and pushed into a corner. H P, we are a survivor. We have been a survivor. They've tried for the last forty years to destroy this city, and here we still stand. Anybody else who would have had all water woes for the last ten years would have been buckled underneath that pressure. H P didn't buckle. We don't bend, we don't crease. We're survivors, and we're here. And as long as we got your backing and your support, we'll continue to survive, as long as we stick together and fight together, H P. Everybody thought that we were done and over with, and here we are, still standing. God, I love y'all. May God have mercy on all of us, and you have a lovely evening. Thank you so much, H P.
Thank you. Councilwoman Martin for District Two.
Hello, can you guys hear me? Hello, hello. Hello, hello. Hello, hello. First off, I want to start off by saying thank you, citizens, for being out here as cold as it is today. Thank you for coming out. However, I do want to say that hopefully we have a totally different year in twenty twenty-four than we did in twenty twenty-three. We did have small victories, but I am looking to see that our victories are bigger in twenty twenty-four than they were the previous year. Also, I want to address that those of you who are open to giving Mr. Washington a resolution, let's sit down and have a conversation about that and see what's possible. Also about the flexibility of Mr. Ashafi, Miss Frye, let's see if we can this year turn Ashafi into a pretzel. Hopefully that would be possible. See how flexible he really is. And in saying that, you guys, I wanted to say thank you so very much. Happy New Year to all of you, and let's have a quick twenty twenty-four. Let's rise in Highland Park. Park, see for this future.
Everyone, glad to see you here, and out is pretty cold, so please stay warm, and if you know of any seniors, or as earlier was explained, someone needs a warning center, make sure you kind of direct them, or just check on your seniors on your block in your area that you know, call them. Um, hopefully we won't have any more outages, that's hopeful thing, uh, D T E has been out in some areas to cut trees before it happens, so we need some other things done, but I hope for a great year this year, um, as the other councilmen have already spoken and said, uh, again, the victory situation has been already answered to you, and as well as we did have some great victories to me last year, and hope for some more this year. Also, look for resources, resource fairs, and a lot of other resources that are here or coming here, um, for our cities, such as Thor, Wayne Metro, uh, United Way, et cetera, look for all of those continued resources, and please use them, if someone doesn't know, please let them know, uh, about those resources, and also, let's be a good neighbor, what is a good neighbor? So you may have a senior, maybe even, it does not hurt, or for someone to deliver to them, that's probably a good thing, you don't also look back if you don't, maybe you put them on our, okay. So, our engineers, let's be also a good neighbor, and so with that being said, I, I wish many blessings to everyone, also, I'll be praying for Councilwoman Robinson and her family, as well as for this year, I'm looking for peace, prosperity, and productivity, with that being said, everybody, for me, have a good night, safe.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Manica. Um, it's a lot, you got screenshot? Don't, all right, thank you very much. We had our policy conference this last week, and that's a little gray area, that's San Tram, this is where we live at, we are one of those districts, it's ninety thousand people, so each district in the city of Detroit has ten times the population of the City of Highland Park, and the most important conversations that we're having in our city about growing the population and about attracting people here, that was on the day at the Detroit Policy Conference, it's a big deal, the governor set aside a mission of earning two million additional people to the state of Michigan before the end of her tenure. What I heard at that conference is to take John R. all the way down south from downtown and come on the other side and take brush all the way up back through Highland Park, because that's the way that Detroit is addressing their issue of population growth is with the developments that they're putting down, in the way, the downtown front of the Highland Park, how different it is, and if you travel to Chicago, or to Nashville, or to Baltimore, well, can't say Baltimore, or to D C, you have certain areas, you see how they've been able to attract people there, with the type of mixed-use developments that have seniors, because we have a huge population of seniors, along with single people in their apartments and studios, the reason why I mentioned this to you is because the entire state of Michigan is talking about growing our population the same way that we are, by having, you mean, it's a way to attract, so, all the way downtown, right past the stadium, brush, all the way up, you got an opportunity to see many of you who are older, you remember what that used to look like, it was the cash quarter, something different now, and so we should take that as our cue, because that's where we got that little gray square right there, you can't be any more in Detroit than that, that's it. Start to pay attention to some of the conversations that they're having in Detroit, and learn from the lead that is being placed by their, their, the infrastructure, each council district in Detroit is ten times the size of the entire population of City of Detroit, ninety-three thousand people. See ourselves as part of that larger conversation, and my mission to you in twenty twenty-four is to make sure that I'm at these meetings and having conversations, and that our community is represented, because San Tram is there, they're there, their city council president is at the Detroit Policy Conference, their city co-, their city council president is at the Ma-, the Mackinac Policy Conference, you can't look out for your constituents unless you're in a Detroit conversation, so that's my goal for twenty twenty-four. Having concluded all business related to the City of Highland Park, the Chair will entertain a motion to-
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Jayden.
A favor?
Hi.
Evening, gentlemen, thank you.